Good evening, Riverbank City Council L R A Board meetings are now in session. Today is Tuesday, August twenty second, two thousand and twenty-three. It is six P M. Please rise.
Let's pray. Father God, Lord, we thank you first of all for this great city of Riverbank. Lord, as we celebrate its hundred and first birthday, Lord, I thank you that, Father, for this great council that's before us today. I thank you for the residents of Riverbank, Lord, that there would be blessing and favor upon them. Lord, I thank you for this city council tonight, that, Lord, we're able to come into this place. And when I think about even pledging the flag, Lord, it's one nation and that there would be unity in this room. Lord, as we conduct business and go through the presentations, Father, I'm grateful and thankful that we have a platform where we can express our concerns. And though they may be different with others, Lord, that doesn't mean it's divisive. But, Lord, it's an opportunity for us to learn and grow and learn to work together as we make Riverbank and continue, Lord, to make this a great place to live. We give you all the glory for it. In Jesus' name, amen.
Roll call, please.
Councilmember Libby?
Here.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Here.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Here.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Here.
Mayor O'Brien?
Here.
There'll be no changes to the agenda tonight. Any council member or staff have a conflict of interest on any scheduled agenda item to be considered is to declare their conflict at this time. Seeing none, we move on to presentation seven-one, presentation from SMA Entertainment on the marketing plan for the two thousand and twenty-three Cheese and Wine Festival.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Tonight's presentation is a follow-up to a discussion that we held at the February fourteenth City Council meeting. At that time, two major topics were discussed, the first being the presentation of a marketing plan for the marketing of our Cheese and Wine Festival. And so we have that today with SMA Entertainment. The second item we discussed at that point in time was also the proposed layout or initial layout for the festival. One of the feed recommendations that we received from council was that we incorporate the community center within the scope of the event, which we've been able to do. The second was to attempt to bring the festival all the way downtown, depending on the number of vendors. So you'll hear on both of those topics today.
Mayor and members of the council. So when we talked in February, we talked about how could we move forward with the festival and make it better this year. And we kind of talked about who we should award the bid to, and we chose SMA Entertainment. And I don't think you had a chance to meet Stephen Alexander. So he's here tonight. And we also talked about how could we market it better, because we all felt that marketing might have been part of the reason that it wasn't as successful as we hoped it would be last year. So we are here for the marketing plan, because it's, what, seven or eight weeks away? So now we're ready to really start, you know, getting that into gear. So I'd like to introduce Stephen Alexander. Stevie wanted this contract for three years. He was really coming into the office, wanting the contract, and he finally has his chance. So I think he's gonna give it a good try this year.
Thank you, Mayor, City of Riverbank Council members, for inviting me to this fantastic meeting. I brought some handouts. If I could arrange giving them out. Just take a sec. Hope I have enough. Okay. Once again, thank you for having me. Thank you. Like I said, Miss Sue said, my name is Stephen Alexander, and I'm the proud owner of SMA Entertainment. Okay, if you could follow along with me, I'm gonna tell you a little about where I come from and how long I've been doing this. The name is SMA Entertainment. My wife's name is Michelle. My name is Stevie Michelle Alexander. That's how we get SMA Entertainment. We've been doing this entertainment company for just our tenth year. And like Miss Sue said, we, this is about the second time, third time we bid it for this contract. I just want to thank each one of you for giving us the opportunity. And I'm here for the marketing plan. If you turn to the first page, here is the picture of the flyer that's going out, posters, banners, and flyers. The first page. The second page, you turn to the second page. Right here. Here's a little history about us. For just over a decade, SMA Entertainment has been the Central Valley and Northern California leading festival producers, bringing talent to all genres, jazz, funk, Motown, Latin, Latin rhythms. We are the proud owners, registered owners of the Funktoberfest. We are the proud owners of the Tequila Festival. We are the proud owners of the Stockton Jazz Festival. And we are the proud owners of the Barbecue Festival in Stockton, California. We've been doing each festival in the city of Stockton, California, for nine years. This is our tenth year branching out. Up and coming festivals, we have, as chosen here, the Riverbank Wine and Cheese Festival and the Oakland Jazz Festival. You go to the third page, which is here. This is part of the marketing plan. Oh, I'm sorry. Go to, I'm sorry, demographic, event demographics. My apologies. Event demographics. Now, as for marketing, my wife is in charge of that. So what we decided to do is pull the census. How many people are in certain cities that can participate in the Wine and Cheese Festival? And what we finding out is the city of Modesto has two hundred and twenty-two thousand people, over two hundred and twenty-two thousand people. Terrelock, seventy-four thousand people. Riverbank, twenty-five thousand people. Oakdale, twenty-two thousand people. Newman, eleven thousand. Housen, seven thousand. Water, Water, Food, eight thousand. We also plan on hitting San Joaquin Valley also. San Joaquin Valley, Stockton has three hundred and twenty-one thousand people. Tracy, ninety-seven thousand people. Lafera, thirty-three thousand people. No-Dye, sixty-seven thousand people. With that being said, there's no reason why we can't get a certain amount of people down to the Riverbank Wine and Cheese Festival. Okay, sorry about that. There's no reason why we can't get, I'm just showing numbers because numbers don't lie. It's just, like you said, the marketing portion of it. So if you turn to the page, the marketing portion of it. Our plan is getting the word out to people. Now, how do we get the word out to people? Do you mind if I turn around a little bit? Because, right? The mic? Okay. Okay. Okay, sorry about that. The marketing plan is we have to get the word out to the people. How we get the word out to the people is, social media plays a major part of the plan. I know at the age, I'm fifty-nine years old, almost sixty years old. And it's hard, change is hard, very hard. Social media, it plays a major part of it. So the plan is Instagram, Facebook, TikTok, radio. That's the social media portion of it. The second portion of it is TV, email blast, flyers, posters, banners, guerrilla marketing, and the newspaper. What we have chose to be cost-effective is using, we're gonna use Facebook. We started using Facebook. We're gonna use radio to get the word out, email blast, flyers, posters, and banners. We plan not to do the three Ps. The three Ps stand for poor, piss, planning. If we plan ahead, which we plan ahead, which we plan on doing, plan ahead, we could be very successful as a team. Understanding the festival market, we need to know the demographics, the age, the gender, and the economic portion of it. We have to provide a solution to the people, needs, and wants. The next page is a picture of a car show we bringing in. What we did was, instead of going out there and trying to put out a car show, we enlisted notable car clubs to bring cars in. I was told last year that it wasn't too successful. So what we did, we went out to knock doors, we went to car clubs. And the good thing about car clubs, the car clubs bring nice vintage cars in, and they bring people in. The wine tasting area. On the back is the flyer that's going out for wine tasting. It's very nice and tasteful. The plan is, once we run it on the radio, which will start September fifth, and the reason why it's going out a little later before, because I felt as though it's very cost-effective if we start forty-five days in that particular pocket to save money, save the city some money. So I chose to do it forty-five days. Usually, people don't buy tickets till the last minute. So we chose, within forty-five days, around September fifth, you'll be hearing it on the radio. We will be starting to put up banners, most likely next week, throughout the whole city, throughout the whole city, banners and posters. Any questions?
Yeah, what is the budget for the marketing plans for, you know, one through nine here that you have listed?
Yes. Ten thousand dollars for radio. We'll be going Mega One Hundred, three thousand dollars, Cat Country area. They have around three radio stations in that broadcast, Cat Country, ninety-seven point seven, ninety-seven point seven, and another radio station. That's another three thousand, and fifteen hundred dollars for the river, the river.
Any Spanish-speaking stations?
Yes, Univision, I'm gonna say Univision. And we'll be giving up one thousand five hundred. So we have a ten thousand dollar budget for radio.
But for social media?
Social media, fifteen hundred dollars. And that's only Facebook and Instagram.
Have a map of the event?
Yes, we currently do have a map of the event. I don't have it on me, but I could get it to you.
I think we all would like to see it.
Okay. I have no problem with that. The next meeting or?
I have some major concerns with the map and it not including downtown and downtown businesses.
Yes.
So that is a huge concern for me. And I would like to see our downtown showcased. And I thought I was pretty vocal about it at the last meeting, the planning meeting. So I was a little disappointed seeing that it wasn't including the downtown, and it stopped and fenced off before it even got to our downtown businesses.
But what happened was I had decided, due to the fence, the cost, the cost, I had to bring the cost down. So I had to get very creative with the storefronts here. They normally make money. The bars and grills constantly open. So what I did was move the fence line to include the event center, the community center. I want to say community center. So what happens is when they come downtown, we put the entrance at, I want to say, Fourth Street. So they have, everyone has to go through Fourth Street entrance. So that traffic will still, the people will still go to the bars and grills. But I had to get, bring the cost down. It was going to cost the city too much money. But I can reassess it as money come in.
And there were some other questions about how you're dealing, if you're blocking off the fencing and the fencing starting at?
I think it's Fourth.
Fourth Avenue.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
What about the parking down here? And the businesses are down here. So it's just, people park here in front, and then they're at the event all day. So it's just, I see some issues. And I've gotten several phone calls that people were very concerned and upset that we're not using our downtown. We've sent so much money. And it's kind of our, our coud de gras. I mean, our downtown is thriving. And to not include it in part of this festival, I think is, is pretty sad myself. So that's just all I want to add in there.
Not to cut you off, but here's the good thing, the beauty about this is, where we have the entrance at, it's right before downtown. And this is, mind you, this is a free event. So we have traffic going in and out that front gate. But I had to save the city money. So what I chose to do is move the fence a little in to reassess it as money revenue come in, the vendor money, the sponsor money. I could always push it back more. But I assure you, the business won't lose no money.
And from my, from my understanding, we're at about forty vendors at the moment. The goal is to reach about a hundred vendors, right? And that would push the event out, hopefully, in this case, reaching the downtown core, right?
So far, we're around at forty-nine, I want to say, around forty-nine, close to fifty. And we still have a month and a half to go. The vendors usually sign up late. But we, our target is to hit a hundred vendors.
That's what Sue said, that as we expand the vendors, we're gonna expand the fence line. So it will be, hopefully, you'll get the.
I understand that. I understand that. But when something's sent out to the business owners that, you know, it's stopping there, and that's what they were notified, that's why all the phone calls. So just saying, I think we need to show Chrysler downtown. So I'd like that to be a priority. And that's my.
That's, that's a, that's a good question. And we'll work, we'll.
And I think if you are blocking it down there, I think we need to discuss and talk about how you're dealing with the parking. It's just open parking. So, so if you're blocking it off, I would like to see that, that the parking issue is taken, you know, to consideration to what, are you just free parking for all? And if you're not including the downtown businesses in the festival, and you're blocking it off, you're just opening the parking for festival goers? So I'm passing on some questions that were brought to me. So that's where these are coming from.
Are you talking about, are you talking about the housing or?
Nope, I'm talking about downtown businesses, the parking that's in front of them. If you open the entrance at Third Avenue.
Yes.
And leave it all open.
Yes.
The parking's gonna be used for the festival goers and not the business goers.
Right. But the good thing.
So when you say that they're not gonna lose money if they can't get people to, you know, so we're blocking it off, we're not including them in the festival, and we're leaving open parking, and all the parking's used for all the festival goers, they can't have customers park there and come and go and get their food. So those are some of the concerns. I'm, again, don't shoot the messenger. I'm relaying some concerns from the businesses downtown.
Here's the unique thing about that is, if their parking space is open in front of my store, they might get new parkers, people that come enjoy. Because a festival goer comes, if I park in front of the pizza, hypothetically speaking, if I pull in front of a pizza shop, but I'm really going to the festival, what happens is, if I see that pizza shop, the average person will go in that pizza shop. I mean, hypothetically speaking, they will go, and they have to come back to their car.
Review the entire plan next time, please. And I want to know the parking, the arrangement, and the vendors, where you're gonna fence it off. That is, has always been the plan in August, early September, making sure that we fully understand it. So let's do this again.
Well, we'll bring back the map at the next meeting or when we finally have that, you know, pretty finalized, closer to the event. I do, I do want to reiterate, at the February meeting, the goal was to be able to come to downtown. But the direction was that if we did not receive enough vendors, then we would not. I would say that regardless of the situation, parking would still be a concern for those businesses, for the patrons who were not looking to attend the festival. It's still free parking to everybody. The, some of the businesses that are a little bit further down are also significantly impacted, like Antiquas, because they are able to, yeah, they don't necessarily, and of course, yeah, we, and other businesses down in that location. So we know that this festival inherently is an impact to everybody. So we do realize those concerns, and our staff will continue to work with obtaining more vendors to be able to bring that back out.
I just want to make a comment too about, I want to make sure that the businesses that are downtown that normally do not sell alcohol, someone needs to have the A B C certification. Because if they're gonna sell alcohol during the cheese and wine event, and the reason why I say that is, is if we should happen to get a visit from A B C licensing and they're selling without a permit, the whole festival could be shut down. That's how serious that is. Thank you.
And when you come back, a security plan would be appreciated, too.
Okay, we have all that. One thing I do want to mention, I just have to say it, there's more that meets the eye. When we are trying to come down to the downtown, sometimes it's not well received. A lot of times, it's we don't want the Cheese and Wine Festival downtown. And when we had the downtown market, my staff was not treated very well. And I don't think that we want that for our employees either. So I think respect, you know, needs to be on both sides. And there's a lot more to it than what we're saying here. There's a lot of decisions that we made. One is, we're trying not to lose money this time. We need to not lose money at the Cheese and Wine Festival. That's why we decided to move the boundary, because fencing is hugely expensive. The fencing to just come all the way down here, we first tried to get the Antigua, but it was booked, because we were all well-intended on, you know, just being at this end of town. But it was booked, so we already had to use the community center. So there, it was fragmented last year. People felt that the festival ended, and the wine fest, the wine tasting wasn't part of the festival. So we wanted to close that gap, looking at the fencing, that gap problem we had, and how, how we were not well-received for the downtown market. Those were all the factors that we looked at. So those are the decisions. I don't want SMA Entertainment to take the heat on that. We all talked about it. And if council wants staff to come back with another map, then that's something. But there is more to meet, that meets the eye. There was a lot that went on last year that wasn't approved by some of the businesses. Could have cost the city a ten thousand dollar fine if we would have got caught. So those are things that we just, I have to say it, this is the truth.
We will come back with the map. Normally, we would have done that anyways with you. We like to share it so that it's out at the public venue, and for any potential opinions that you may have at that point in time. We'll be closer to the event. So hopefully, we'll have been a lot more successful with our marketing to vendors and be able to reassess that. And it'll include the security plan, of course. All of that is already vetted through our sheriff's department. So a lot of the recommendations that you see there have already been discussed with Chief Ridenhour and his staff to make sure that we're putting together the safest event possible for all of our residents and visitors.
We look forward to you coming back in September and make sure we get all the information in advance. Thank you. Moving on with the presentation by Dave White, Chief Executive Officer for Opportunity Stanislaus.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So Dave White, our Chief Executive Officer for Opportunity Stanislaus, is gonna provide us with a presentation on some of the great services that they offer to the city and the county.
All right, Mayor, members of council. It's very, very honored to be here tonight to meet with you and to do this presentation. I can't believe it's been ten years since I came here, back in two thousand and thirteen. My hair is getting grayer. I'm getting a little larger. And I just, that's what happens when you get older. But it's really a great honor to be here. We are very grateful for your support. We have some great things to share. Things are going well with our organization, with the economy. I think you're seeing that in your sales tax receipts. And you're seeing really great things happening all around our region. And to start with, I wanted to, let's see if I can get this to work. Where should I point it? Can you advance them for me over there? Okay, I'll just let you know. Okay. Point it over there. Okay. Okay. There we go. Okay. So the city of Riverbank is a major chairman circle investor in Opportunity Stanislaus. Opportunity Stanislaus is a five-one C three economic development organization that serves Stanislaus County. And we have, you're in good company with other major chairman circle investors, the city of Series, the city of Oakdale, city of Patterson, Canagra Foods, which is just down the road in Oakdale, the Wine Group, which is very close, and Hillmar Cheese, Boya Petroleum. Those are just some of the companies and cities that you share that distinction with. And you'll see that the following Riverbank companies are major investors in OS, including Ametis, F and M Bank has a branch here, Ripon, excuse me, Repsco, Valley First Credit Union, Wells Fargo. And we do a lot more work for other companies that are not investors in our organization, which I'll talk about in a little bit. But we have a lot of good connections in the city of Riverbank. We do a lot of work for businesses that are in the Riverbank Industrial Complex, including Ametis, Circulus, Repsco. We've done so much work for Repsco, is they, we've helped them introduce, we've introduced them to new clients. They've been able to secure new customers. We've connected them with other businesses around the region, with Ametis, Andy Foster is on our board. And we work very closely with him, and Kerry is here today. And we work very closely with all of them to help build that into something very special. We've provided a lot of service to other businesses as part of our S P D C network, a lot of small businesses. We can't disclose those names because the Small Business Administration won't let us. But we've served many, many companies, small businesses in Riverbank. Want to first start talking about Volt. Our Volt Institute is, as you know, is an advanced manufacturing training center. We started it in two thousand and seventeen. We started it in 2017. We've already graduated 400 students. These students have found work, uh, with companies all around the region. Uh, we have many of our students start out making minimum wage coming into the training center. They come out making $32, $33 an hour plus benefits. So that's a game changer for these individuals. Uh, we have so many great stories to share. One young man, for example, came in making minimum wage. He graduated and was able to go to a local firm making $32 an hour and then got contacted by Tesla. And, uh, they offered him, um, a salary that was, uh, in excess of six figures to work at the Tesla plant in the fair, and over in, um, the Bay Area. But he still lives here in, in this region and he purchased a home, he and his wife and kid. So we have really, really great stories like that. Uh, we do a lot of leadership training too. So not just the manufacturers we serve, we serve the hospitals, we serve the, uh, other businesses. We serve the service sector. We serve many through all sorts of different types of training programs that will help their employees and help, uh, their staff be able to get skills that will help them advance in their careers. And you can see that some of those include Amedis, F and M Bank, Repsco and others. And this is just in terms of talent development, we have a whole de- uh, department that is focused on developing talent and providing programs that will help, uh, people understand of the complexities of the workforce today. Coming out of the pandemic, it turned everything upside down where, um, it became hard, more difficult to acquire talent, but also to retain talent. So we have all sorts of programs that we provide to businesses and even cities to help them not, not only attract talent, but also to retain talent. We have a program called Rising Tides, which teaches the best practices to attract and retain talent. We just started a new program that we're you, that we're running throughout the, the region now. It's called, uh, Career Ready. One, one, uh, one really challenging, uh, issue that has popped up since the pandemic is people will take a job and then they, two weeks later, they don't show up for their job. They just quit. And this has become a, a real problem, not only here, but throughout the country. So the whole, whole idea behind Career Ready, working with some of Gallo's, uh, top, uh, workforce development peoples. We developed a program to help people get over the hurdle, get over the, the hedge, just be able to stay with a job and don't, don't, don't quit. But stay there long enough so you can gain some skills and gain some experience.
Quick question, the, the Rising Tides, is that sector specific?
Uh, is that what?
The Rising Tides program, is that like sector specific or?
That is, uh, any, any company, any city, anybody really.
Okay.
And you guys have total access to that. We've done some, um, training, we've done some recruitment for cities. We were successful helping the city of Newman, uh, find somebody in their public works department. So we, we provide all that for everybody, all that kind of, uh, all, all of our different programs. We do HR research. We can share information about, uh, wage and salary, uh, s- information. We can, uh, we do work and for skill gap analysis. We do, we have a, we have a program that Mari Sola is very familiar with called Buxton. Where we can, uh, show the types of retailers that'll come into a market based on their, the number of rooftops they have and, and the number of, of the socioeconomic data. And in fact, we're working right now, uh, to predict the type, the type of companies, the type of retailers that we can attract based on a new Costco coming in. And, uh, we, we just provided that information to, uh, Riverbank recently. So we do a lot in terms of, um, in terms of workforce, but, um, and we plan on doing.
I have, I have a quick question.
Yeah, sure.
Okay, we have, uh, about, what's our percentage of, of population around 5% of the, 4% for the county?
For the, for the total county for Riverbank? Yeah.
We have less than one tenth of 1% uh, going through Volt. You helped all of these co- uh, companies in Riverbank, but yet four people do not stretch over 10 companies. So how, what, you're playing with numbers. I know Circulus, um, is in operation. You've helped them in one or two cases, but, um, Organics is in the, still in the planning stage. So what did you do for Organics?
We provided data to them, uh, just on, uh, when April Potter was here. I can't give you the exact specifics, but I can get back to you on that. But we provided research for them as they were coming in. Uh, on demographic, uh, HR type research. That's where, where we, again, Organics you're talking about.
I am, yes.
Mm-hmm, right. Yeah. And for Amedis, uh, we've done, uh, they've, they've hired Volt students. They've sent employees, Riverbank employees to our leadership training. They've sent, uh, uh, they've taken advantage of our research. They've taken, we've helped them with grants. We've helped them, we've written letters of support to the state for them because, you know, they're dependent on, um, grants and other types of, of government programs. We've done a lot for, um, Repsco. Like, you know, we've helped them secure customers, we've helped them, uh, with research. We've helped train some of their employees, leadership development. We've helped them, uh, they've also hired some Volt people. The four individuals involved, that's just, that's just this last year. I mean, if you go back to the beginning of Volt, I, I can get you those numbers, but it's a lot bigger than four.
But you said we've graduated over 400, yet Riverbank had four. So, you know, to me, you're giving me not just one year, you're giving me the total concept of.
Yeah, so the 400, that's all of our programs, including leadership development. The four, that represents people that went through the long-term maintenance mechanic program.
I like figures, that makes sense.
Yeah, yeah.
So just to add on with the mayor's saying, so, um, i- if there's any way, just kind of advocating for Amedis too, we, we just had a meeting with them this past week. Um, just talent acquisition, they're struggling to get employees in there. Um, so if there's more that you guys can do to help those kind of businesses and Circulus and other business in the River, in the city of Riverbank. Uh, I guess what we're trying to say is if there's any way you guys can be just, just a little bit more proactive in, in the city, uh, than, than the numbers we're kind of seeing. Uh, for the data we're receiving, basically.
Yeah, it, it hasn't, to, to be honest, it hasn't been the best year for Riverbank as compared to previous years. I don't know why. I mean, we're working really hard and, um, Amedis, we've done a lot of work for them. They had a bit of a challenge this last year because of their funding, but that seems to be sorted out and now they're in a better position. And, um, and so Andy Foster, I'm on the phone with him always, constantly, he's on the board. And so he, I'm very aware of what's going on there and we've, we've tried. But they're not the only company that's struggling to find employees. I mean, everybody's struggling right now. And that's part of the challenge that we have just in this region and, and it's part of the, the issues that have come out of the pandemic. But we are working closely with them and with Rep, I'm in contact with Paul Bennett almost every week. He calls me up and, you know, wants this, wants that. And so we, we are working very closely with them and we're.
In the near future, um, the, uh, industrial complex is going to be doing a, a partnership with our high school. Uh, to, uh, get, um, what is it, internships. So we have Ed, uh, Chief Educator here tonight, but we've mentioned that before and we want to move forward with that. Uh, because not everyone's going to college.
Right.
Fostering those relationships right away. And I hope that as we foster those relationships, that you can be part of the, um, uh, guidance on how to get from point A to point C, um, getting those six figures here.
And, uh, yeah, absolutely. And so the other thing, you know, we've had a lot of students come through. We've had a lot of Riverbank students over the years. I don't know why this year, maybe our marketing's off, I don't know, but we haven't had as many this year. But going back, we've had many more Riverbanks. Um, we don't have a lot of employers in Riverbank. So we, we're, we're trying to build better relationships with companies like Silgan, for example. We just had some really good meetings with Monshine, so we're now working with them and with Riverbank Organics and, and others. And, uh, so we're, we're trying, we're just, you know, if anybody has any good ideas on how we can, you know, we, we'd love to, um, help them out more. And, but on the SBDC side, we're working with many, many small business owners in Riverbank. I'll, I'll get to that slide in a minute. Um, but I want, I did want to mention something else. We have a new, we were able to get a federal grant, uh, through EDA for a program called Volt on the Go. And in essence, what we can do, uh, we're p- we're acquiring 92 pieces of equipment that we can take on the road. We can take our Volt Training Center, put it on wheels and bring it right up to the RIC or any place in Riverbank and provide training. And so that's, uh, that's going to be happening, uh, we've actually started with that. We just got our first, uh, batch of equipment, which is mechanical drives. And so we're going to be offering that and we'd love to, uh, partner with somebody up here to provide training for, uh, local residents. And so that's coming. Okay, economic development, so we had 638, um, businesses served. Now, when I say 638, these are actual companies that we visited in person in their office. And so we, um, have met with 638 companies, 46 of which are from Riverbank. And have provided services to them either through SBDC or through economic development, through our different, uh, programs. And I mentioned Amedis, Repsco, Circulus, Riverbank Organics, Monshine. And we're also the support for retailers coming to Crossroads. So, uh, and that's our plan. We're going to ramp that up even more. One thing that I would really encourage is to have more interaction. We've done some events. And I know that Herman Zavazza with SBDC is looking to take his show on the road more and do, um, different events, not just in our own office. But in Oakdale, we just did an event in Oakdale about two weeks ago and Turlock, but we're planning to do some things in Riverbank this next year. Uh, we're taking a lead role in supporting important community projects. And the reason for that is because the more, uh, community assets, like, um, if you have, like, a, we're working on a project in Turlock, a sports center project. And we're working with the city of Modesto, the Modesto, Modesto's Children, Children's Museum. Uh, we, we support that and the reason those projects are so important is because it builds quality of life. And that's what, uh, talent, people that are looking, you know, have college degrees, that's what they're looking for. They want a place where they can be, where they can, uh, have access to those types of amenities. And we would love to do a project in Riverbank. We've talked about different possibilities. We just need to identify something. If you have something that you're planning to do and you'd like to come and present it to our board, um, we have a lot of influential people on our board. Uh, we'd love to, uh, work with you on that. And then Valley Sierra, this is just, now this, this is what we've done in Riverbank on the left. On the right is all the different types of workshops that we've done this past year, uh, throughout the county. And we, like I said, we'd like, we're planning, uh, to do some events in Riverbank this next year. Then another thing that we took on this last, um, in this last plan is a policy initiative. And the reason we're doing that is because there have been so many, um, negative legislative initiatives coming out of Sacramento. Uh, there's just so many different things, uh, bills that are very detrimental to business. That, uh, we decided we need to at least make our voice heard. Uh, we're not endorsing candidates or political parties, but we are trying to get behind important, uh, legislation that will help business and also oppose legislation that would hurt business. One example of that was AB 1000, which was a bill that came out of the assembly that would put a restriction on, uh, a kind of a, a setback on where you could put distribution centers. And it, it had asked for a thousand-foot setback from residential areas. Well, that's almost impossible to do in California. You have to develop in Death Valley because, uh, to a thousand feet, so that's a quarter of a mile. And so we, along with many other business organizations throughout the state and through our partnership with the New California Coalition, we were able to defeat that bill. Working with Senator Caballero, who's been very influential out of, uh, Gilroy, that area. But she also covers the west side of our county as well. So that's been another area of focus for us. And so that's the presentation, so be happy to take any, any questions that you have.
Yeah, um, so I guess a, a few things on the work that has been done and then the work that, that needs to be done. Um, I've been looking over some of the quarterly reports and I think like the presentation has been a little vague and how the numbers specific to Riverbank. Um, so it'd be great to get those. Um, I mean, uh, you gave us an example about, about a person that, you know, went to Tesla and ended up staying in the region. Was that a Riverbank example?
That was a serious example.
Yeah, so I mean, uh, things like that qualitative, quantitative would be great to get. Um, and, and the work to be done, I mean, uh, communities like Riverbank is, you might know, you need to meet them where they're at. So having those programs here would be great and, and getting people, you know, presented to here. Um, and, and an opportunity with, uh, Amedis, for example, with North County Corridor and just all the conversations going on. I mean, doing, um, digital, traditional media, um, and, and good old grassroots, like focus groups, like community engagement meetings would be great.
Well, thank you, and we certainly will do that. I'll get you some specific data that, uh, that we can share. One thing I didn't mention, we are, uh, also, we've been asked to incubate and support Beam Circular, which is a, uh, which is a Stanislaus 2030 initiative, which is to, um, create, stand up a new biomaterials industry in this region. And so they're actually part of our organization, part of our staff for the time being. And we are working closely with them to identify companies. In fact, we identified a project just today. That's a $300 million project. We have to compete nationwide for this, but it's a, uh, company that's right in that space from the, the Bay Area, working with Berkeley Labs. And we're, we've identified the Riverbank Industrial Complex as a potential place for that to locate. A- as you know, there's a new test bed facility that will be funded through county, uh, surf, uh, county ARPA funds along with other grants. And, um, we're trying to find the right location. I personally feel, and I've been on the record about this, is that it should be at Riverbank. Because there's already critical mass there, companies that are doing that, but we'll see where that goes. So we just kind of need to all work together to, but that test bed facility will be a high, uh, volume development opportunity for companies that are trying to test their products and can't do it in the Bay Area or wherever they're at because they don't have the capacity there. And so the test bed would be something that they could use to, to show, showcase what they can do with, um, bio waste, turn it into other products.
I have a, uh, concern. Most of the businesses that you showed in your presentation have been manufacturing positions or manufacturing companies. So what about those that are not in manufacturing? We have a lot of small businesses here in Riverbank. Nothing connected to manufacturing. So what does Opportunity Stanislaus offer those small companies?
Well, again, through the SBDC, the Small Business Development Center, I think, I can't remember, the number is like 38 or something companies that we identified. I wish I could tell you who they are, but the federal, the, the Small Business Administration, yeah, they, they, we have to sign a non-disclosure with these companies when they receive services, that we don't, we will not disclose private information. And so we have to abide by that. We can share aggregate information about who they are, but we cannot share actual company names without their consent. But we have served quite a number through the SBDC and we have, um, 38, um, SBDC. Um, we have specialists who are, uh, consultants who worked in industry, all, all different types, not just manufacturing, but all banking and retail that are experts in their field. And they provide free technical consulting to these small businesses. And there have been a number in Riverbank. Uh, last, in, in the years during the pandemic, we served a lot more because everybody was in panic mode about losing their business. And, uh, but this last year, we served a good number in Riverbank as well. And I can, I can get you the aggregate information, but I can't share the specifics. It's not, we would love to, but we, we can't just because we have to follow SBA guidelines. Uh, they get a lot of their funding from the Small Business Administration.
Well, I'll accept the aggregate number.
Okay, I, I shared it. Uh, it was on, it was in the presentation.
You say 38.
Well, whatever that number was, I can't remember what it was, but it was on the SBDC slide.
Okay, thank you.
Just, just real quick, just if it's, if it's possible, could you have a dedicated rep? Uh, whether, I know Herman has, uh, expressed interest in kind of covering this area. Uh, we spoke, the last time we spoke, that was in March, so I wasn't really sure to, am I speaking to Herman or Amy Schneck, not really sure who to reach out to.
Herman.
Yeah, uh, so when April Potter was on board, uh, she left in April, or January. Um, she, you know, we would reach out once a month, just kind of touch, you know, touch bases. So I represent the downtown businesses here, so that was very, you know, very useful, very helpful information she would provide. So just having a dedicated rep, if that's possible.
Yeah, and that, I, I hate to give excuses because that's not the type of person I am. I like to be accountable. But when we lost April, we lost, that was a big loss for us and she lives in Riverbank. And, uh, she actually went to work for the county, making a lot more money and we couldn't match what the county was offering. And so we had a, a, we had a hole there for a while that we had to fill. And so when you, when you lose a key employee like that, then it, it kind of changes your dynamics. And so that's part of the reason, uh, she was a big advocate for Riverbank and was working really hard. But we now have a new person we just hired, started today. So you're going to.
So we got a little spoiled there, so we kind of want to keep it.
No, I get it, I get it. We, we have a lot of people to keep happy, but we do that joyfully. We, we, we'd like to, we're here in your service, so we appreciate that. But we, we've hired that position. We have a new person. We're excited about her. Her name is Violet and, uh, you'll be hearing a lot from her.
Let's keep in mind that the Chamber of Commerce has been waiting for someone too. So I guess that would be the connection, Ms. Violet.
Uh, the Chamber.
For the Chamber of Commerce.
Which Chamber of Commerce?
In Riverbank.
Oh, okay. Oh, you mean from service from us or a re, a reach? Okay, I'll make sure she knows that.
Okay, thank you.
Um, you have a good website. It's Modesto-centric. There's a, um, you skirt around Riverbank, you put Riverbank in a couple of your slides. I thought that was like, okay. I'll take Oakdale out, put Riverbank in. But, you know, you, you look at your website, you are Modesto-centric. Um, and, and surrounding areas. Um, I'd like to start getting a little bit more of the valuable FaceTime on your website for the city of Riverbank. We have a lot going on here. We have good places to eat. We have excellent places. We have a downtown here. I don't think you've taken a look at.
Oh, no, I, 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 I eat at your downtown. I eat at that Italian restaurant right there on, uh, Patterson. I can't remember the name of it, but.
Talander?
Yeah, no.
Um, Atchison, Atchison.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Catholic Church.
My wife and I, we.
Is an Italian.
We are so excited about the Costco coming. I can't believe, I can't tell you how excited we're.
But we have a lot going on and a lot of it, it seems like we're, we as a council are, are going out looking to do those things. That you're saying that, that we're getting the benefits from. Repsco, for an example. Um, when they came here, we started giving them your spiel, because the people didn't show up on time. When they did, they already were gearing up for, what was it, twenty-four employ, twenty-six employees? But only could handle, only could hire twenty-two, whatever that was. So that caused a, a rift. Uh, you're saying you're working with Riverbank Organics. Right now, it's a one-person show.
Yeah.
Okay, so. I'm working with Riverbank Organics and, and I, I see myself out there. I don't know, next time I'll, I'll talk to Eric. Uh, but I'm, I'm not seeing the benefits that I see on your website. That's Modesto-centric. And, and you, you are, we are your client. We are paying you to market us. Please, over the next year, market us.
Okay, message received. And, uh.
Sorry, I, I didn't mean that. Anybody else wanna say something?
Well.
I, I, you have a great program, but you're bringing in, uh, biofuels for, we, we're doing that too. We went out and we sought Amedis. And now you're working with Amedis? They haven't started their biofuels yet. Um, you're, you're working with, uh, Circulus. Well, Josh Harder was the impetus on some of the hiring out there. I'd like to see something showcased out there at the LRA, like what happened. Uh, tell me, how long ago was that? Twenty eighteen?
Well, do you remember the big event that we held there?
Twenty eighteen?
Yeah.
That's what I'm referring to. I'd like to see that again. We're the only team in Stanislas County that has the capability to bring in the companies that you're talking about. Um, Crow's Landing doesn't have that ca, capacity yet. Uh, but that's probably where it's gonna go because the county put in the ARPA funds and the county needs that going. So let's showcase Riverbank again, and let's get it on your, on your front page. Um, even if it's under-series, um, and I'd like you to get to know our superintendent of schools. Because Riverbank Unified School District does very well too in academics, but was not in the three that you, you showcased. Let's showcase the capacity, the capabilities, and the direction that Riverbank is going. Because we worked our tails off to get to where we are right now, to leap forward.
Sure, thank you, and we will, we will work harder. I promise you that. And, um, you know, I, we, we're, we're like any company. We're. You know, we, we struggle because we lose talent and we have to keep a lot of people happy and we try to do the best we can and, but we can work harder and we will. And we'll do the best we can. Thank you. Thank you. Okay. All right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Thanks, Dave. At this time, members of the public may comment on items not appearing on the agenda and within the subject matter jurisdiction of the City Council LRA Board. Individual comments will be limited to a maximum of three minutes. Uh, and time cannot be yielded to another person under state law. Matters presented cannot be discussed or acted upon. Do we have any public comment?
Mayor, I'm gonna take an opportunity for public comments as Marisa Garcia, resident.
Sure.
Uh, just wanting to thank Sue Fitzpatrick for her service to the city. Uh, when I first started with the city, uh, she was one of our newer directors and I was extremely happy and pleased to have worked under her service. Uh, so Sue will be retiring and I know she asked for no official, no official presentation, which is why I'm making these comments under public comment. But I thank you on behalf of myself for everything that I was able to learn from you under your direction. And it's certainly a thank you from all of the city staff and the city council for the wonderful projects that you were able to bring to fruition. And so please don't leave without taking your flowers with you before going home. Thank you.
You're leaving before cheese and wine?
This is her.
I thought it was your last hurrah.
This is her official last meeting with the city of Riverbank, yes.
But we didn't embarrass her. All right, thank you. Uh, continue on public comments. Vicki.
Good evening, council members and Mayor O'Brien. My name is Vicki Holt and I'm the branch manager at the Riverbank Library. I, and I wanna let you know of the few activities that we have at the library. Um, tomorrow at four o'clock, we're doing a craft, um, for Kumihimo Japanese braiding. Um, this craft is great for children nine and up. And they're gonna make keychains out of that Kumihimo braiding. Um, the library has extended our opening hours, which is really exciting. We start at ten o'clock, um, Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday. And then Wednesdays, we start at noon. The closing hours are the same time. Um, so I, I just wanna say that customers are very happy. We're back to pre-COVID hours, but one extra hour, um, on Saturdays. So, um, we've been off for the month of August for storytime, but we start back in September, uh, on Tuesdays at, at eleven o'clock. Alternating English and bilingual, um, storytimes. And the mayor is coming on September nineteenth, um, at eleven-thirty after my storytime. The book club is reading Whiskey When We're Dry by John Larison. The discussion is on the last Tuesday of the month, which is August twenty-ninth at four PM. We have extra copies at the library, so come by and get a book and, and join us. Um, and then Saturday, September ninth at two o'clock, the master gardeners are teaching on California native plants. So if you, um, it, the California native plants are water-wise, easy to care for and have colorful flowers. In addition, creating, they create a habitat for your landscape, um, to shelter pollinators like bees, butterflies, and hummingbirds. So all our programs at the library are free, and that is, um, provided by the Eighth of Ascent Sales Tax. Um, so you are always welcome to come to the library and assist us. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, please.
Good evening. Good evening, Mayor O'Brien, Riverbank City Council, City Manager Garcia. Uh, I do want to note that I did give, uh, Mr. Dave White my card and, and we will be in, in contact. Um, I value your comments and, uh, look forward to, uh, to meeting with him to, uh, to connect, uh, Riverbank Unified School District. Uh, with what we're trying to do here in Riverbank. I think that's very, very important. And, and you're right, I don't remember who said it, but, uh, not all students go to college directly out of high school. Um, and there are high-paying high school jobs, um, out there that, uh, are ready for our students to, to acquire. I'm here because, um, I, I wanna formally introduce myself as the superintendent of Riverbank Unified School District. I'm Constantino Aguilar. I'm in my fifth month, though I've been here a little bit longer, uh, but, uh, but I'm in my fifth month. Uh, one town, one team, one dream. The pin given to you represents this idea. I came up with this idea when I was researching Riverbank and considering, uh, applying for the super, superintendent position. One town. Yes, we are a city of action. I've gotten a lot of feedback about that. Uh, but let me explain. I use the word town because a town to me is familial. It's connected, it's unique, and it has character. And that, to me, is what Riverbank is, coming in, uh, from Merced County. One team. Students, families, classified staff, certificated staff, administrators, community members. We are all part of this team, and we all have a unique role in serving our students and our community. One dream. It's our job to create the opportunities to teach our students the skills necessary so they can dream build, dream big and fulfill their dreams. I hope all of you wear this pin proudly. I think it's also important for you to know a little bit about me and, and who I am. Uh, what are my leadership core values and who am I as a leader? They are on the back of the card that you received tonight and some of you received at some of our other community events. My leadership core values are foundational to the work we do and what you should expect for me and the entire Riverbank Unified School District Administrative Team. We live by these core values and we model them. They are on the card you got on the backside. They are, we nurture, we serve, we empathize, and we lead. We nurture by building others' capacity and we meet everyone where they are, and we put people before paper. We serve. We serve our community and students every day, regardless of world circumstances. We don't make excuses for not being able to serve our students. Thirdly, we empathize. We empathize with all people by treating everyone with respect and honor. And by valuing everyone's life experiences. We all have a unique story which makes us who we are. And lastly, we lead. We lead by creating trust and living our values, if I may continue for just a tad bit longer.
Finish your thought.
Thank you. Lastly, I wanna cordially invite you to attend the Riverbank Unified School District and the University of California Merced Automatic Admissions Program. That will be held on September twenty-first at Faria Gym at Riverbank High School. Now, I understand, uh, some of you, if not all of you, will be attending another function. Um, and unfortunately, you will not be able to attend, but I ask that if you do have someone, uh, that can attend in your place, uh, they will be recognized along, uh, with all of you. Just very quickly, the MAP program, it guarantees admissions to all of the Riverbank Unified School District students by completing their fifteen college prep courses and earning a minimum of a three-point-five grade point average, guaranteed. And along with that, there's a nice financial aid package. So this is work, uh, that I've started to do, uh, as your new superintendent here in Riverbank. And just a sample of some of the things, uh, that we'll be working on, uh, to improve our educational system here, uh, in Riverbank. But then also working with all of you and, and our community. So I thank you for your time and for that extended, uh, minute or so.
Very much.
Thank you.
Next, please.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. Um, my name is Dave Romano. I've been, uh, working on the Riverwalk project. I know you haven't gotten an update from the development team for a while, so I thought it would be appropriate, uh, if I came and gave you a quick update. Um, I think it's important for the council to understand as well, uh, a little bit in the way of background. When I graduated from college, I went to work for an engineering firm in Modesto. I had the pleasure of working for the company that was the city engineer in Riverbank for about six years. Um, when I left that job, I went to work with, uh, some lawyers who do land use and consulting work. And I've had the opportunity to work on the North Landing Project, the Elmwood Project, Crossroads West, uh, Crossroads, the Santa Fe Clause Annexation. Uh, I'm blessed by marrying a Riverbank girl. Uh, I've, I've loved the fact that over the last thirty-plus years, I've been able to watch the success uh, of the city of Riverbank. You know, when we look back at where we were in the late eighties and we look at it today with Crossroads, with the Crossroad Shopping Center, with the new Costco, and I was so sad that I couldn't be here for the groundbreaking. I happened to be at an irrigation district meeting on the other side of the county. But Riverbank has really been forward-thinking, has planned, has done a good job, uh, and has really moved the city forward. And what that means is that today, Riverbank is the envy of your neighbors. Uh, I work throughout the cities in this county. I work throughout this county. I work a little bit to the north, a little bit to the south. But you really have done a wonderful job. And, uh, when you're doing a good job, people take shots at you. And that's part of it. But, uh, this council has been thoughtful in moving these projects forward. And, uh, as the mayor said, you know, the council's been, um, working hard to attract businesses, working hard with the Army Ammo Center, getting retail development. I think all of those are great positives. And so, uh, to the extent that I was a small, small part of that, uh, I'm very, very thankful. The Riverwalk project, uh, that's now in the planning process. It's in your general plan. You adopted that general plan in two thousand nine. The city's been thinking about how do we grow? What areas do we grow? Um, the city has prepared infrastructure master plans based on that general plan. How do we serve that area? How do we serve our general plan? McHenry Avenue and the bridge have been widened, so there's good circulation in the area. Um, and while there were activities to plan this area about twenty years ago, this is a different project. This is a project that has a mixture of land uses, will serve a mixture of different economic, uh, and age groups, and we're excited about that. A project like this takes development over time, so it doesn't occur overnight. It will be developed in phases. Um, all of the issues associated with this project will be analyzed in an environmental impact report. You will get an opportunity to review that. And ultimately, this council, based on all the input that you get, uh, will get an opportunity to act on this project. We hope affirmatively, but that's a decision with you. Your staff's been wonderful. We appreciated working with them. And we just wanted to come, give you a little update on the project, uh, and thank you for the consideration so far and your consideration in the future. Thank you, Mayor.
Next, please.
Mayor, we have one on Zoom.
Okay.
Hello?
Hi, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, please say your name and your comment.
Jamie Agers. Can you hear me?
Go ahead, Mrs. Agers. We can hear you.
Thank you. Jamie Agers, seventy-seven thirty McHenry Avenue, Modesto, California. Outside Riverbank, within the Stanislas County unincorporated area, but within the proposed Riverwalk specific plan that you just heard about from Mr. Dave Romano. You've heard from me many times over the past two years. I have many, many concerns about the project. My main concern is that project will be built on prime ag land as defined by the California State Department of Conservation, which identifies ag land of ten acres or larger. And all of the property in this area is identified as either prime or areas of statewide importance. My concern is that homes should be built on soils of lesser quality, such as the areas to the east and to the south of the city where you have a lot of hard pan and so on. The areas where these homes would be built, homes and businesses, homes of up to three thousand or more, uh, based on the numbers in the notice of preparation and the quote flexible design that's included in the notice of preparation. Um, are all in areas of prime ag land where we're growing food. So again, homes should be built on soils of lesser quality. So please, when this project comes before you, vote no. Thank you very much.
If you wanna be. My name is David Addle and I'm part of the people as we all are here. And, um, I'm just speaking off the cuff here in reference to what has taken place here this evening. But in, in reference to the, uh, Wine and Cheese Festival, which is a great thing, by the way. And then addressing your question, again, this is free information. It's gonna, it's worth what it might cost you, which is nothing. But at any rate, maybe they thought if, uh, the fencing is expensive, storefronts are fencing. And if they took and put the vendors down the middle of the street, and then the vendors would be right in front of the businesses. and then the vendors would be right in front of the businesses and then that would replace some of the cost of the fencing, just an idea. And my grandfather told me one thing, long since died, at any rate. Pardon? Anyway, my grandfather has always said, it's not how much you make, it's how much you keep. The meaning of that is, and we all experience in that today, all of us, that if you make three percent increase in earnings, yet inflation is six percent year after year, you're eventually homeless. So all of these nice things that government supply, and by the way, government, unfortunately, as far as I'm concerned, I'm a private, private, never worked, worked as a self-employed in my whole life. Um, the government has grown way out of proportion. And you know, we have these great programs for training. I started working at eight, which I was raised on a dairy. But I also worked for other businesses where I donated a lot of my time. I went to work for seventy-five cents an hour, and guess what? I was an asset. I wasn't a cost. That business appreciated me and that business paid me and I learned and I got a variety of learning. So yeah, again, we're spending all all these grants. They sound nice, but where does that grant come from, people? Comes from all of our pockets and grants end up as inflation. And again, I spoke about inflation earlier. And so I understand, or excuse me, I'll use the word, I comprehend that we need a balance between government and the private sector. There's no question about that, but we are out of balance. There's, there's too many um nice things that government wants to do for us, but you know, the road to hell is paved with with the nice things. And uh let's see. I guess that was it. Thank you very much.
We have another one on Zoom, Mayor.
Go ahead. On Zoom.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, please state your name and your comment.
Yes, my name's Annabelle Gammun and I live in the unincorporated area of Stanislaus County. And I am remarking on the remarks of David Romano. First of all, we are all looking forward to reviewing the draft EIR and but I do have a question and a re- and a comment on his remark that Riverwalk has already been planned at the um plan for Riverbank with the general plan. And it has not been, and I beg to oppose or disagree with that. A lot of the property of Riverba- of Riverwalk specific plan is in reserve. So looking forward to the discussions and comments when the draft EIR comes up. Finally, there is really a problem of infrastructure on all of this rah rah on all of the development going on in Riverbank. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Gammun.
Any other comments? Anybody? Come on up, please.
Mayor, council members, my name's Tim Pollenkamp. I've lived in the city for about seventy years. And um I know, I don't know how many of you people drove down Patterson Road just before you get to Morris Nursery. Right hand side, there's a sign of, I know we're in the political season. We've been in it forever. But there's a sign up that I'm a, I'm, I'm a guy that cusses a lot myself, but I don't believe big signs this big and this big should be viewed by the public that have to drive down the road daily and read this sign in front of this guy's fence that he has his right to say what he wants to say and you know, view his point. But I don't think someone with young children or somebody who's more religious, I personally am not. Um, I, I agree with his right to free speech, but I think, I don't know if you guys, I know it's not in the city limits. I checked yesterday, I was down here. But it looks like it's in Riverbank because it's between, you know, Morris Nursery and the city. And I don't know if you guys have any kind of ordinance banning these kind of uh big old signs that say something about our president or ex-president or whoever. But whoever it is, it shouldn't be allowed to be viewed by the general public in such a manner as if you lived across the street from that, would you want to wake up every day and look at that big old sign saying stuff that you may not want, you may not use those words? Some people do, but I use them, but the sign offends me, whether it's Republican, Democrat, Independent, whoever. But I think you guys should maybe look into that. It's right across from your market, pretty close. And um it just looks like Riverbank condones this kind of behavior and I don't think Riverbank should. That's not what this city's been all about in my lifetime. I've probably been here longer than most of you. But um I just think it should be looked into. And uh you know, maybe you could put a little pressure on the county. Apparently it is in the county. I called Buck today, our county supervisor. I have personal friends with him as Leanne is also. And so we call, I called him and waited for a call back to see what kind of, if they have any ordinance or anything against that kind of stuff, but I, I think it should be looked into. And I think would benefit the whole of Riverbank looking better as opposed to looking like some of them other states where that stuff is viewed as you look really good and you got that hanging in the front yard. I personally don't do that, but uh it should be looked into. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. There's no other further public comment. We're gonna move forward to the consent calendar.
Mayor, before you start, at the request of staff, uh item nine point five, we are requesting that that be pulled and considered at a future meeting.
Well, that is being continued. People can still comment on it. But tonight, we're considering consent calendar consisting of item nine one, wave reading nine two, approval of city council and local redevelopment authority board minutes for July twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-three. Item nine three, authorization for out-of-state travel request to have the finance staff attend the Caswell Annual Conference in Salt Lake City, Utah. Item nine four, authorization for out-of-state travel to have the finance staff attend the Itron Conference in San Antonio, Texas. Item nine six, resolution to approve final MAP zero one dash twenty twenty-three for BDC Riverbank two LP and Crossroads West specific plan. APN zero seven four one zero one four zero 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 seven. Item nine seven, resolution approving the city manager to enter into a cost-sharing agreement between the city of Riverbank and the county of Stanislaus for the construction of the Clarabelle Road Overlay Project. Anyone wishing to pull any items or comment on any items? Seeing none, do we have a recommendation?
Make a recommendation that we accept that consent calendar as stated.
I second.
We have a uh first and a second of consent calendar minus item nine five, roll call, please.
Councilmember Oribi?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Excuse me. Ten one, a resolution to adopt the twenty twenty-three, twenty-four schedule of park amenity rentals, recreation programs, and facility rental fees for the city of Riverbank.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Anthony Lemmons, our Recreation Supervisor, will be providing his first staff report to the city council.
Good evening, Mayor and city council members. Um, yeah, so we just have a couple of updates um for fees for twenty-three, twenty-four. Um, we've almost working on pulling that up for us. I don't have it. Okay, I'll just go off the top. So um starting with our um, with our parks, we just kind of went up minimal um with our fees, just a couple, um like about ten dollars um uh for the residents um and ten dollars as well for the non-residents. Um, across the board for all the um, the, the park rentals, uh not really too many changes. Um, we're trying to keep it affordable for everybody so everyone has access to the parks um and that are able to have their parties, you know, as the development, the city comes through. We know that our parks are going to be um utilized a little bit more. Um, so we had to justify some of those prices by um, because like many people have been saying, you know, there's been a lot of um upping of costs and material costs and things like that, so. Um, and then with some of our um, our programs, most of our programs have stayed the same. Uh, we haven't changed the fee at all uh for non-residents or residents. Um, and also for our facility rentals, uh the community center and um the scout hall, the community center went up a little bit. Um, we are now at uh, excuse me, for the, the uh, the old fee was um the fifteen hundred for residents and we are now at seventeen a hundred and then um for a non-resident was eighteen hundred. Now we're at uh two even. Um, so that's pretty much the only ones for the facility um for our larger facilities. Um, scout hall still remains the same, no um cost change there. Um, and a little bit of staff time, so whenever someone rents out a field um like Sports Complex or um Castleburg, um usually we have a um a site mariner fee that's associated with that and that just went up two dollars, um was eighteen, now it's about twenty. Um, other than that, that's pretty much it. Um, so we just, you know, recommend that council considers adopting um this resolution to approve the fees. Um, and I'm welcome to take any questions or comments you guys have.
No questions, just um you all continue to improve the events year after year. And uh Maricela shared earlier that the fee is still relat- relatively low compared to um other county or other cities in the county, so um I appreciate it.
Absolutely. I'm gonna open it up for public input. Do we have any public input?
Mayor, there is no one on Zoom wishing to speak.
I have no one in front of us wishing to speak. So I'll bring it back to the council for consideration.
I'll make a motion to approve item ten point one.
We have a motion to approve and a second on ten point one, roll call, please.
Councilmember Oribi?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez? Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you, Tony.
Thank you.
Item eleven one, resolution to approve the McRoy-Wilbur Communities deferral of system development fees for the River Terrace subdivision.
Donna Kenny, our Planning and Building Manager, will provide the staff report on this item.
Good evening, council members and mayor. Happy to see you all tonight. Um, as mentioned, this is a fee deferral through uh McRoy-Wilbur Communities. For those that don't know, the system development fees finance unfunded development costs, expand public improvements, ensure continuation of services. It minimizes costs to the city as well as um all being charged to new construction. So the River Terrace project, formerly known as Ward Villas, is um subject to the twenty twenty-three uh SDF amounts. Um, these are the full amounts right there. Uh, McRoy-Wilbur is not asking for any reductions or any credits with this item. These are the ones that they intend to pay. But if it can be deferred from permit issuance to permit final, um, we would uh charge a hundred dollar uh deferral processing fee on each building. And they have come before us probably six times in the last eight years asking for this deferral. And they've always been very good at paying when they needed to pay and paying the full amounts when they need to pay the full amounts. So the total amount of system development fees that would be deferred would be approximately twenty-six thousand dollars for each unit. It's the streets, water, wastewater, storm drain, and park fees that would be deferred. So considering their track record, uh staff recommends that you consider deferring those fees from permit issuance to permit final um on twenty-eight lots within River Terrace, so being used to that name. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
I have a quick question. Are they asking for a deferral or county fees? They may want to consider that if they are not.
They um, they haven't said anything about it. Normally, if they do ask for those to be deferred, they get um a document from the county that they bring to the building department. Otherwise, she charges them the full fee.
I have no questions. All right, we have no questions. Uh, open it up to the public for any comment, questions?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, Kerry Pope. Um, as I think most of you know, I was the original developer of of Ward Villas um and which has now been marketed as River Terrace. Yeah, I would appreciate the, the, this consideration of of the deferral of fees. However, I wanted to go a bit further with this because originally with this project, um it was, we really wanted to stress the affordability aspect of this project. Um, and originally, the city was willing um to go ahead and uh take these fees and and turn them into down payment assistance. Um, we've not been able to to achieve that. As of today, interest rates are at a twenty-three-year high. We're, we're at seven and a half percent plus. Uh, does not bode well for the first-time homebuyer or for affordability. Um, Maricela has been great in working with us to try to find a way that we can still achieve that goal. Uh, a lot of these folks that are going to be buying these homes that are, that are working families uh can, can afford the mortgage, can get the mortgage, they just don't have the down payment. Uh, so I would really stress uh that, you know, I, 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 I'm not done yet. I want to make sure that we get this done somehow because it really makes a big difference on those that that can afford, you know, a home. Uh, so um, I'm just kind of stressing right now that uh if we can find a way, uh McRoy-Wilbur is even, has been willing to pay these fees if there was a way that then we could, after they were received, to then turn that in somehow into uh down payment assistance. But you know, there's a lot of laws in place. There's a lot of things in place that, 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 you know, prevent us from just doing that. But um I think if maybe we can put our heads together, we might be able to find a way to still achieve this because it's important. Um, so if there's anything that we can do, um I, I'm, I'm more than willing to to do what I can in order to make this happen. So I'm, I'm open to any questions that you may have.
Thank you. We'll uh consider what's in front of us today.
Yes, I understand that's not on the, on, not on the agenda, but I, I, I did want to to stress that, you know, as it relates to this project, no action can be taken on that, but I, I uh, I, I wanted to make sure it be heard, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Any other comments, questions?
I guess I have a question. Where do those fees go? Do they actually pay for any of the hardware, the water, paving, sidewalks? Does any of that money go to that cost, Donna?
We don't have a conference. Tell us what you want and then when you're done, then she'll respond.
Oh, okay. I'm done.
Yeah, good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, all of these fees are used to maintain our existing system. Water goes to water, wastewater goes to wastewater. Um, they're not inter- interchanged unless there is some specific reason and the council agrees to move some of those funds. So they go where they're supposed to go.
Any other comments, questions? Then I bring it back to the council for consideration.
I'd like to make a motion that we accept this agenda item as stated.
I'll second it.
We have a motion to approve and a second on item eleven one, roll call, please.
Councilmember Oribi?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Thank you. Thank you, Donna.
Thank you very much.
Item eleven two, a consideration of the options for appointment of a Riverbank representative to the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District. One, adopt a resolution to reappoint Mr. Charles E. Neal for a four-year term. Two, adopt a resolution to reappoint Mr. Charles E. Neal for a less than four-year term. Or three, open a recruitment to select a representative for a term beginning January first, twenty twenty-four. Or three, open a recruitment to select a representative for a term beginning January first, twenty twenty-four.
Mayor and council, Gabriela Hernandez, our city clerk, will be providing the staff report on this item.
Good evening, mayor and council. So tonight for your consideration. We would like to present the options as the mayor stated for the appointment of a riverbank representative. To the Stanislaus Consolidated Fire Protection District Board. Mr. Charles Neal, who is our current representative, has submitted a formal request to be reappointed for another four-year term. As the mayor stated, you have three options before you. One would be to adopt a resolution to adopt Mr. Neal to another four-year term. Second, to reappoint Mr. Neal to something other than a four-year term or open a recruitment. We are bringing these option, options to you now as the current term will expire on December thirty-first of this year. And we want to be able to get ahead of it and recruit now and have an appointment done before the end of the year. I'm available for any questions.
Any questions?
Yeah, I have one. I think that Mr. Neal is a valuable citizen in our community. And I know he provides a valuable insight and resource to that board. And so I would really like to see him reappointed. That's where I stand on that one.
I agree, and I think he's done an outstanding job and you, you know, when you have someone who's willing to step in and, and, you know, continue, I think. And everything is going fine. They, you know, they like him at the board. He's, uh, has given valuable resource information and. I just think that we, we should reappoint him. That's my opinion.
Just for clarification, in the first appointment, it is required to have those quarterly updates, correct?
Yes, so when Mr. Neal was originally selected to. To the term, he was, he was selected on a vacancy that was expired before the end of the term. So he's only served for three years of that four-year term. The appointment was based on quarterly reporting to the council.
I know he's, he's missed a few. I'm okay with one and two, as long as, you know, it's, he, he's. Under the understanding that he is giving those quarterly updates to the council. So we're being seen informed as well.
And we can make sure that we let him know, should you choose to reappoint him for a four-year term or another year or whatever you choose tonight. That we let him know that we need those reportings to the council.
Right, well, I, it looks like we're going to have a motion. Before we bring it back to the council, are there any public comments, any inputs? All right, I just have one for legal. I think we can do what we're going to do anyway. Because it is an appointment and it's four years. Do we have to open it up each time? Okay, that answers that question. All right, bring it back for consideration.
I would like to make a motion that we go with option number one and reappoint Mr. Charles Neal to the board.
And I second.
There were motion to approve eleven two, option one. For Mr. Neal to serve a four-year term and a second. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Uribe?
Yes.
Councilmember Jones Cruz?
Yes.
Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Hernandez?
Yes.
Mayor O'Brien?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero to reappoint Mr. Charles Neal to another four-year term. Thank you.
Thank you. Twelve one, staff comments.
Good evening, mayor and council. Donna Kenny will be providing some response regarding the comments that Mr. Fallen Camp made earlier. As we have received a number of calls regarding that specific question.
Yes, good evening again. Today I was contacted by our senior code enforcement officer, Michelle Garcia. Michelle has received several complaints about the sign that was mentioned on Patterson Road. She did the research and found out that it is a county property, so we don't have any jurisdiction there. But she does have a counterpart that she works closely with in the county. So she did contact them and made a referral and they agreed that they would follow up on it. Thank you.
Thank you, but as a first amendment right, no matter what the sign says, I know what it says. Unfortunately, you can't take away a, a right. Whether it's a property owner, wants to develop or a person who wants to put a sign up. As long as they're within an amendment and it's right. It may be offensive, but. We, good luck.
Well, if the county does consider it a political sign, there are certain regulations about when you can put up political signs before and after. An election when they have to come down. So we'll have to see where it goes.
Just supporting another, okay.
Give us an update regardless, because I was contacted directly about it too.
I'm sorry?
Could you give us an update when you hear from the county or when you get?
Absolutely. I will let you know right away. Thank you.
All right, other staff comments? All right, for council comments, council member Jones Cruz?
Been there.
All right.
I had something written out and I kind of. Put it aside for this evening because I'm going to just. Speak from the heart. I think we need to strive for excellence in this city. And I remember making a comment down there before I was elected up here. About we can't just settle for good and we can't just settle for great. We need to strive for excellence. And in all those things, we need to focus on that because Riverbank is a fabulous place and I really. That's what I wanted to say tonight.
Thank you. Councilmember Uribe?
Thank you, mayor. So I'd like to just invite everybody to a grand opening that we're going to be having of Moxie Salon and Spa. For those that don't know, Glam right here down in Santa Fe has been here for, operated for six years. They're going to be relocating to Atchison. The address is three, 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 one Atchison Street. It's going to be on September ninth at four P M. Hope to see you all there. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Barbara Martinez?
Okay, I just want to thank the community and the chief for sponsoring our national night out. I actually wasn't here, but I heard it was very successful and a lot of fun. We gave away Central Valley Community Resources, gave away. Snow cones and we went through three hundred snow cones in about forty-five minutes. So I think everyone had a good time. The Shaw meeting. Stanislaus Homeless Alliance is a regional effort to tackle homelessness. And just want to let everybody know that the meetings are recorded online and it can be reviewed on their website. So that's the Stanislaus Homeless Alliance and that's it.
Thank you. Vice Mayor?
I also want to say thank you to Chief right now, where I was able to go on a helicopter ride along and. It was pretty amazing to see the city from that view and all the things that go on. Obviously with the city and to be able to, to take that view of it. And I mean, just the, the expertise and the care from the team there. So it was, it was awesome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Can I throw something in there before? And I'm so sorry. I forgot to thank you too. Got a little emotional about what I said, but it was pretty amazing. I agree with what Rachel said. It was, it was amazing. I got a chance to go last night. On a fly along and it was one of the most thrilling things to see all the stuff that was going on in town and seeing the Costco pad and flying over. The Riverbank Industrial Complex. It was, it was just a whole nother view on this fabulous city. Thank you. Sorry, ma'am.
As Maricela stated at the beginning of the meeting, the Sierra House RFP should be going out tomorrow.
This is the Stanislaus and Jackson.
Oh, Stanislaus and Tiny Homes.
Tiny Homes.
Okay, where does Sierra House go?
We, we awarded the bid at the last meeting, mayor.
Okay, I must have missed that. I must have missed the meeting. Okay, and when can we have some type of open the door type of a ceremony?
So PG and E was supposed to be out here last week, so I will confirm if there is lights on. If there is, then we're getting ready to order all of the supplies that we need for it. Cambridge Academies is lucky enough to be able to get a lot of things donated for our residents that will be using the day use facility. Particularly toiletries, but we will be looking to purchase detergent and other items, towels, et cetera. And if there's any nonprofits that are in the Riverbank area that might want to assist with those items, we certainly will appreciate any donations. But once we have that final setup, then we will be holding an official ribbon cutting. We are scheduling it a little later. To allow for Senator Igman and Senator Alvarado Hill to be able to work that into their schedule.
And I do recall it was five hundred and nine thousand dollars and it was only two hundred and nine thousand above what we wanted. All right, so Tiny Homes is going out tomorrow and we should have some, when does it close?
No, it actually closes, sorry. It closes on Thursday. The RFP has already been issued. It closes Thursday.
Okay, so good. We'll have good news at the next meeting. If, if it comes through. That's all I wanted to know was the update. And if we can have an update from SiteLogic, it doesn't have to be next meeting and it can be an email of where we stand in the projects. Because that's very important. We've spent a lot of money and I want to make sure we keep track of it. And we don't have a, a situation that we've had with another contractor. Okay, with that, we're going to go into closed session, consistent of item thirteen one, public employment. Pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, seven, title chief of police. Item thirteen two, liability claim pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, six, one, claimant Terry McCormick. Agent Smith and Marcy, agency claim against the city of Riverbank. Item thirteen three, conference with real property negotiator pursuant to government code section five, four, nine, five, six point eight. Property sixty-four, thirty-six Oakdale Road, Riverbank, APN zero, seven, five, zero, two, six, zero, four, zero. Agency negotiator, city manager, property negotiator, high price and lifler. Under negotiation price term and payment or both. Prior to going into closed session, is there anyone wishing to make a comment on closed session items?
Mayor, there is no one on Zoom wishing to speak.
All right, we adjourn to closed session.
The Riverbank City Council L R A board meetings reconvened from closed session. Closed session report out from item fourteen point one, report from closed session item thirteen point one direction has been divided to staff. On item fourteen point two, report from closed session item thirteen point two liability claims. The city council voted five zero to reject the Kerry McCormick, Airman Smith and Marcy's claim against the city. Item fourteen point three, report from closed session item thirteen point three, Converse Rule Property Negotiator direction has been provided to staff. Before we conclude, council member Barbara Martinez would like to say something about the birth date.
I understand that yesterday was our hundred and first anniversary for the city of Riverbank, so I just want to say yay, go city of action. Thank you.
Happy birthday to you.
Thank you very much for all of that. And while he's singing, I'll have a reminder that the next city council meeting will be on Tuesday, September twelfth, twenty twenty three at six P M. This meeting is now adjourned. Good night.